Madam Kirk, could you call the roll?
Sarah Lightner?
Here.
Excuse me. Commissioner Lightner. Commissioner Walls?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Tompkins?
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Owwo?
Here.
Chairman Shatwell?
Here.
Thank you. At this time is the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines, each individual will state their name, have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and you may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Open public comment.
Peter Bournemouth. MCR 168 207 is the statute that governs removal office of county officers. Section 207 reads, "The governor shall take no action or any such charges made against him, any such officer, until the same shall have been exhibited to him in writing, verified by the affidavit of the party making them, that he believes the charges to be true, and no officer shall be removed for such misconduct or neglect till the charges have been exhibited to the governor, a copy of the same served on such officer, and an opportunity given to him to be heard in his defense." So I'm not attorney, I cannot give you legal advice, but the county's letter sent to the Governor Snyder requesting a removal of Sheriff Rand must have met the requirements of the statute. The statute requires a written list of charges constituting official misconduct or will from neglect to duty. The statute requires an affidavit along with the letter attesting that you, the county commissioners, believe the charges to be true, and the statute requires that the letter and affidavit be legally served on Sheriff Rand. If those steps were not taken, Governor Snyder and obviously Attorney General Shute can just ignore your resolution in your letter. I asked Michael Overton if those steps have been taken, he told me he didn't know, the lawyer handled it. I suggest that there might be some subterfuge going on here, since Bill Shute is running for governor and he's the one who would have to review these charges, and it puts him in a very tight political net, because if he would send, you know, recommendation to the governor that Sheriff Rand be removed, he'd be offending the powerful sheriffs association, he'd be offending a lot of the Republicans, and if he allowed Sheriff Rand to stay in office, he'd openly bill Shute the charges of racism and sexism in the general election. So I'd like to know if that affidavit along with that letter was sent, and if Sheriff Rand was served with a copy of your first resolution. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning, John Wilson. Last week at the Jackson City Council meeting, County Commission candidate Russ Jennings spoke to the council and indicated to the council that there is a date certain, at least a month certain, that Sheriff Rand will be resigning, and that month is May. He didn't indicate what year, he just said Sheriff Rand will be resigning in May. This information, according to Russ Jennings, was given to him by County Commissioner John Williams. I'm not sure when or where this information was discussed, maybe it was discussed during your closed meeting at your last county commission meeting. We're not sure, of course, the citizens aren't privy to that information. But, why is it that Russ Jennings, who is a member of the Jackson County Republican Party, along with John Williams, why is it that Mr. Williams is sharing this information with Russ Jennings? Again, Russ Jennings stated at the Jackson City Council meeting last Tuesday that Sheriff Rand will be resigning this May of, I would assume, this year. Thank you.
Good morning, Tony Bear. I'm in today, I was driving up Michigan Avenue, and just west of, west avenue, a brand-new concrete road that was put in a year ago is being torn apart. And I'd just like some information on why is that happening? Big areas of the concrete have been cut, backhoes are already lifting 10-inch-thick slabs of brand-new concrete out. Coordination on these types of jobs with buried utilities is critical. Patches never seem to work last as long as the original road. If you excavate down, you get through the earth again, you're undermining the concrete that's remaining adjacent to it, you can never backfill back under the existing concrete. So, the end commissioner comment time, if anybody can explain why is this brand-new concrete already being torn out? Thank you.
Russ Jennings, Leoni Township candidate for 8th District County Commission. I guess I gotta respond to this. Candidate for 8th District County Commission, John Wilson, has some serious accusations, but he doesn't have his facts clear and he's up to his same old rhetoric that he tends to do when he's running for political office. On March 19th, it was announced on WKHM, Commissioner Shatwell, that in closed session, without giving details, that they had a plan in place to hopefully have Sheriff Rand removed by May 1st. That's all that was said. On the date of the last city council meeting, I think last Tuesday, I made a phone call to Commissioner Williams, which we talk often, we're friends, and I just wanted to confirm what I'd heard on WKHM on the 19th. And that's all Commissioner Williams did, was confirm what I heard. I didn't ask for any other information, and Commissioner Williams definitely didn't give any more information. The information that was released on NY this the other day about what you guys are gonna address today was the first that I'd heard of it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. Mr. Overton?
First thing we have up this morning is the Summer Jobs Program, Summer 18 Jobs, and I believe Derp is gonna handle that for us.
Thank you. We have been partnering with Michigan Works Southeast to coordinate a program similar to what Washtenaw County is hosting and has been hosting for a couple of years now. The program is for youth in Jackson County. We're working to partner with local businesses to support those local youth in job opportunities for the summer. It's a 10-week program, the youth will be paid $10 an hour. We're targeting 25 youth for 25 jobs. I've been working with Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Mahoney on this endeavor, and before you, we have a request, and then I believe Commissioner Mahoney and Commissioner Williams do have some comments as well regarding the program, but the request before you, because we are the employer of record for the youth, we will be working with our HR department and our finance department. The paychecks for the youth will actually come from Jackson County, and there's a contract attached that hopefully you had an opportunity to review, as well as a staff report, excuse me, that further explains the program, but the request is to give permission to enter into the agreements with the employer, and then approval of necessary budget adjustments. We don't have an estimate on the budget adjustments yet because we don't have a definite number of youth that will be in the program at this point, but we can provide further updates as the program moves along, but we would be requesting budget adjustments for payroll purposes to provide the youth with the appropriate pay, which is, as I indicated, $10 an hour.
Any questions?
Daniel?
Just a comment. Just wanna say thank you to Deb for the hard work, and thank you to John for the hard work on getting us here. It seemed like yesterday we were at the community meeting and the community outcry, one of the community outcries that stemmed after the rash of shootings that we had, is that our teens and young kids in the community don't have many opportunities in the community, especially in the area of work, and, you know, summer job employment was one of the first things that the community said that they wanted to see happen, and it seemed like the next meeting, Shamir appeared on a magic carpet and proposed this idea for Summer 18, and this morning, right now, is actually the employer orientation, and I believe on Thursday is the student and parent orientation. So it's nice to see this go from being talked about in the community to actually seeing it come to fruition.
Any other commissioner comments? John?
And again, just basically following up on what Deb said, this program really mirrors Washtenaw's program, but it's a reincarnation of what Jackson had done in the past as well. So we're bringing back kind of a youth program, or attempting to bring back the youth program, but mirroring it from Washtenaw's program, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe Washtenaw, their first time, either, I believe their county also was the employer of record, so it's not out of, you know, not out of reason, or not out of line of what the other successful programs have utilized. So, again, just looking for that support from our commissioners.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion? We have a motion and support, any questions? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, duly carried. Administrator Overton?
This morning, we have an update here from the undersheriff in regard to the 800 radio system and tower. Please.
Good morning. It'd be the board's pleasure, Deborah can go first with her agenda item regarding the mic fees, and then we can give you an overview of the system and where we're at.
In addition to the update that the undersheriff is gonna provide, we have a request for waiver of the activation fees for the local communities as specified, not to exceed 797 radios in an amount not to exceed $199,250. This would be the activation fees for both portable and mobile radios. Attached also, hopefully you were able to see the breakdown of what each individual fire and police department, including the courts, will be receiving with regards to this radio project, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions?
So, we discussed this when we first kinda talked about doing this project and waiving these mic fees, correct?
No, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but I believe we talked about each individual township and/or municipality paying their own mic fee. That helped with buy-in to the project and local community support. And originally, we were gonna have, we were gonna have each municipality pay for their own. So this is a benefit we're giving back to the county taxpayers from this operation.
Am I correct?
Yes, that is correct. Originally, that was the case. And frankly, after numerous conversations with township supervisors and the like, they have made an appeal in regard to the mic fees, that they would rather be able to put that money into it to roads and so forth, and potholes repaired, and things like that in their local jurisdictions. We believe that it would be a wise expenditure of funds, and that's why our change of heart, if you will.
Any further questions? Mr. Overton?
So Mike, the coverage for these mic fees is gonna come from where? From the surcharge? There's enough in the bond money to do this?
No, actually, this we anticipate coming out of the credit we have with the states of Michigan.
Thank you. Any further questions? Entertain a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and support to eliminate the municipal mic fees. All in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. Mike, or Chris? Hi, Chris.
Good morning. So I'm gonna run through PowerPoint, and gonna give you kind of a 10,000-foot overview of where we are at on the project and the system. This is the transition to the Michigan Public Safety Communication System, or 800 megahertz system, from our own proprietary VHF system. So, we're just gonna kinda discuss some things about what the description is, the project status, some of the updates on the towers, kind of a critical issue that we encountered in this process with one of the towers, the state-owned towers, where our microwave system is, which is the backbone of the system, and our planned cutover and deployment schedule. So we have Rich Usland, sorry, who is the account manager, sales manager for Motorola. We have Rich Nida, who's the project manager, he is my main contact, who's running this program. Alex Akurakoff, who's the primary engineer for Motorola Systems, and Dan Karpis, who is the kind of system designer or system technologist. These are my main four people that I'm working with to deploy this project. So, we have five towers that we're gonna be including in the simulcast system, two were existing towers that are currently owned by the state of Michigan. Those are identified as 1702 and 1704. We have the new sites that we're creating at Jefferson Road, Brown Road, and Cochrane Road. Green site means it's a new site, would be brought into the system. And then we have six of the Motorola dispatch councils that will be going into the 901 Center with the council at backups that go in the back room in case we lose connectivity to the system. They can operate directly, kinda like a remote radio on the system, so it's a backup or redundancy within the system. And then, of course, our logger, which is basically the recorder for the system that records all the traffic, playbacks, those type of things. So, we've completed a lot of work on the towers. Back in March, we had the steel delivered to all the new tower sites, the Motorola Nokia microwave equipment was shipped and it was staged down in Texas. Some of it was activated and brought online in the racks, made sure it worked. What we call fixed network equipment, that's some of the stuff that's going at the current state-owned sites. We have what we're calling cold installs on those, means that we have the equipment racked in the back room, it's not connected to the system yet. And then, of course, all the electrical work that had to be done at the dispatch center for the dispatch councils, those are all completed. We have some change orders on the fire service side, they wanted some slightly different radios, a lower-grade radio for the current radios they had. They received more in return for the higher-grade radios they were turning in. After we gave them the radios and let them use them, they're gonna have banked radios in the trucks. This radio, they felt, was a little more intuitive for the line firefighter, and a little bit easier to maneuver through. So we're working on changing that equipment out, and then, of course, we have a lot of programming and installation and training, and then, of course, finally, the cutover. We've not encountered any significant obstacles, other than one which I'll address here momentarily, so we are moving the project along at a very fast pace. There's a lot of planning done in the end of 17, middle of 17, as we moved into early 18, and now we're moving at a very rapid pace, physical construction, programming, the templates, a lot of these things are taking place right now, so any minor hang-up in these is going to certainly delay the project, but thus far, we've not encountered those, or at least nothing that we couldn't work through. So our green sites, these are our new sites, we'll start with Jefferson Road. These are all 300-foot towers. All the concrete slabs are completed, we have the underground work complete, meaning the cabling, electrical connections to the slab, and the main power run, which is from the main consumer's energy power line in that area back to where the shelter would be. The tower is stacked, it's actually complete now, and then we have the base stoned in there for the compounds and the drives within the system, and this one required an access road. That access road was built and installed back to the tower site. This is the kind of the construction of the tower. They start with the bases on the tripod, they move it through, they stack the first 100-foot with a lower-style crane, and then they bring in a higher crane that has probably a 400-foot elevation ability. They stack those remaining sections with the tower crews climbing up each section at a time, bolting and securing those towers. Jefferson Road Tower is done, it is completely erected, and the antenna arms are on there, and I believe they have one actual microwave dish, or at least a microwave mount on that tower. So, the physical construction of that tower is complete, and we are going to begin the shelter placements here in the next couple of weeks, that is, the buildings that will come in that will house the radio equipment, all the electric connections will be made within that building. Brown Road, this is another green site. This one required approximately a quarter-mile power run back from the road, obviously you can see the diagram there. Again, all of the work at the site is done, slabs are in, what little drive that we needed or compound that we needed is there, the tower is stacked, we have everything that we need there, waiting for the shelters to take place. And again, same type of process, the tower comes in in sections, they build it, the tower crews climb it as the crane lifts the upper sections, and that tower is also fully erected and has all of the antenna arms on, and at least one microwave dish on. That is the tower, and that's what all these towers will look like, they're a 300-foot tripod base. Our equipment will be in the upper twos, you don't wanna have equipment at the very top of the tower, 'cause obviously that endures it to lightning strikes. Cochrane Road is our other green site, that is also complete, this is a JC dot site, along with Brown Road was also a JC dot site, that they kindly loaned us the real estate to put these towers on. Again, we have everything at the site done, the compounds and the basis for those compounds are there. We should receive all of the shelters for all three green sites in about a week and a half. They're prefab buildings that are coming in trailers, they'll be lifted off on cranes, set onto those slabs, and then all the connections will be made within those buildings. Same type of process, they erect the tower in sections, and this one is completely up. You can see it has a number of antenna arms. This one's gonna be kind of a leg within the system that has bidirectional capability in case we have a failure within the system, so we're gonna have antennas pointing both at Jefferson Road and then also back at Brown Road. The issue that we had encountered was the state-owned tower called 1704, which is the tower at O'Leary Road. That is going to be the main controller of the system, that has a point-to-point connection to Central Dispatch, that creates the simulcast capabilities of the system. When we had the tower work done, basically the analysis on the tower, see if that could handle the loading from the wind and the ice with all of our dishes and antennas, that tower failed. It was not able to pass that standard with our equipment up there. We have been working very diligently, very quickly, with the state of Michigan and Motorola Communications to remediate this tower, we have to bolster it, strengthen it. We encountered some problems within this, but we have a plan, and remediation actually started back on 4/23. Without the remediation of this tower, basically the project falls and stops dead in its tracks, because the hope was to get the link from Central Dispatch to this tower live, that tells us that we have good connectivity, we can start working on the system, aiming the antennas and the dishes and things like that. If this tower cannot handle the equipment we're looking to put up there, then the project is essentially dead in the water. So, we developed a plan, we've worked with both of our partners, we have an idea of what that's gonna look like, and we've got the civil work approved through the state of Michigan, and they'll be starting the remediation as of yesterday. So we think we can have all that remediation, strengthening done, removal of some old excess equipment, et cetera, by about a week and a half from now. At Central Dispatch, we're obviously also doing quite a bit of work. We had to have some unique electrical grounding done for Motorola's councils. This was suggested and required by Motorola to maintain some other warranties, and we have had a contractor in there, we've grounded all the councils as required by them to accept these new Motorola councils. And again, some of the equipment is up on the roof of Dispatch and it's ready for that point-to-point link back to the currently-owned state tower. This is essentially gonna be the microwave design, where it's gonna flow from Dispatch out into the system, and it, again, it's a bidirectional path, so it can have some redundancies in case we lose one of these towers. This leg over on the far left, that is a microwave link only, that's a tower over in Calhoun County, that's gonna be kind of a backup or a failsafe redundancy within the system. It will also help Springport Fire, who covers two townships in that area, maintain simulcast connectivity. They would have fine connectivity within the system, because the Calhoun County uses this MPSCS system in its entirety, but they would fall out of the simulcast network. So, it does provide two things for us, I mean, it does help the system, but this is essentially the microwave design. The microwave is what gives the simulcast its abilities to broadcast that same traffic at equal time throughout the entire system, so all users receive the same traffic at the same exact time. And without a simulcast, you could potentially have a firefighter or a police officer in the Henrietta area, if traffic came through on the Jefferson Tower, they would not hear that, because it would not hit off that tower. Simulcast is kind of the gold standard within public safety, that's what you want, you want all users receiving the same amount of traffic. So, this is our preliminary cutover, obviously you can see it right there for yourself. We're gonna finish the three new sites, including the microwave connections. We're gonna finish the microwave installation at the state-owned sites 1702 and 1704, and then also that existing site out there in Calhoun County 5702. We're gonna bring all sites up on the 700, 800 megahertz spectrum. I know it's called 800 megahertz, but there's only a certain bandwidth available on certain spectrums, and so we're actually gonna have some frequencies at 700 megahertz and some at 800 megahertz. The users will not know, the equipment will not know, it's just more spectrum available, has the same abilities, and all the same power. We're gonna finish the dispatch center microwave link, and this is the antennas that will go directly into 1704, which will give Dispatch the connectivity in the system. I've talked about this many times, but the importance is, to have this link, is that Dispatch will be seen on the system by the state of Michigan at the NCC in Lansing. They'll be seen on that system as a priority type of network, meaning if we do not have this type of equipment, and we went with a lesser route or without the Motorola councils, they would just be seen as basically not a radio on the system. And that's not how you want it for public safety standards, you want Dispatch to be able to override any traffic if needed, to get priority messages or priority traffic out, and that's one of the importance of it. Plus, it maintains a very good secure connection to the system. Once we have those connections up at Dispatch, we can test those state-owned towers, where obviously the sites are already erected and we're having some of the equipment cold-installed in the back rooms, we can start to refine those links and get that stuff going, and then, of course, we have, once the system is up and all of our antennas and dishes are pointed, we can start doing test runs on the system, both about coverage and receipt and transmission of radio traffic, and then, obviously, the final cutover and the full acceptance of the system. Again, this is very flexible, it is a timeline, but any number of things can happen within here that may push that back or may speed it up. This is our implementation schedule, like I talked about, the shelter installations, we would expect to be done near the end of May. Our antennas and lines, which are actually being run right now, we expect those to be done in mid-June to late-June. Also with that, we're gonna have all of these things done, the council cutovers, the fixed network equipment in the back rooms, in also mid-late-June, and then in July, we're gonna start doing the testing plan on the microwaves, optimizing the microwave system, and then in August, we're looking at subscriber provisioning, and basically what that is, is allocating the radios to each department, making sure we have the correct templates for each department, making sure those radios function correctly for that department or that public safety discipline, and then, obviously, system acceptance and final cutover. Training, that is a fluid schedule, probably that'll be occurring on a rolling-type fashion throughout the summer. We have a lot of people to train through a lot of departments, and I'll be working in about the next week and a half on a plan for that, or at least a very high-level approach about how to train people on this new system, both from the dispatch end and from the users' ends. Is there anybody that has any questions about this?
Everything's been moving along pretty good, there's no real hiccups or anything. I like your explanation of where we're at, Chris. Could we get a copy of that PowerPoint sent to us today?
Yes, I would prefer, if it's acceptable to you all, I can email it. The only reason we do not want this in, obviously, a public format where it's readily retrievable, accessible by any individual in the public, is obviously its system designs, it has diagrams for radio towers in our communication system. It's one thing to present it at a public meeting, it's another thing to have it readily accessible for eternity in a public document, so if that's preferable, I would be glad to email it to you, and at least that gives you an idea of where we're at, and you can refer to it if you need to.
Any further questions? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
JC dot?
Yes. Next up, we have JC dot with an advanced construct request. I believe Bruce is going to handle that for us this morning. Morning, Bruce.
Good morning. What we have is, I'll keep it short and sweet. It's becoming a more common problem. We have this project all set. The grant money's been confirmed. We're supposed to have it. The federal government has passed the legislation permitting the funding, and dot just doesn't have it yet. Essentially, the message they're getting from the federal government at this point is, the check is in the mail. So, the question they're asking us is, do we want to wait for them to get it, or do we want to front the money and go ahead with the project? The benefit to us to going ahead, obviously, is that we don't experience any construction delays. It also moves us to the top of the list in terms of who gets the money once the money does get here. So, it lessens the chance that that money might not be available. There is a small risk that the money might never show up, in which case, we end up just paying for the whole project out of pocket and never getting reimbursed. M-dot reassures us that that's a very, very small likelihood, and truth is, we have the money and the budget to cover it if it happens. So, what we're asking for this morning is simply permission to go ahead and get started with the, it's just a little over a mile of resurfacing on West Michigan Ave from M-60 to Glasgow Route. And I'll take any questions that you have.
This is completing the repair work from when we delivered the gravel and everything for the airport, isn't it?
It's part of it. I think this project was already on the books, anyway, but yeah.
Start with Commissioner Elwell, then Commissioner Williams.
Well, I guess we're just guessing here, but have you ever heard of M-dot not paying in a situation like this?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
We don't do it very often, but...
I don't want to take us off-topic, but we had a county resident ask a question about West Ave in Michigan, and I know that's city's jurisdiction, and that's the city's program, but is there any insight that you have as to why they're cutting up the...
I have no idea. Not only is that within the bounds of the city, it's also M-dot's road, so it's two times removed from us. But I'd be happy to talk to him afterward.
Thank you.
Remind commissioners, we did this with the bridge, correct, at Moonlight Advanced Construct?
I don't...
I believe it is.
We talked about it.
We moved funds and, yeah, and we did an advanced construct a year ago when federal highways hadn't allocated funds, and we were able to get ahead of the curve, whereas the city chose to wait, and they ended up spreading the cascades over two construction seasons instead of one. So, that's the advantage of moving this forward.
And there was another one we were considering last year that we actually didn't end up bringing before you, because the money showed up before we had the opportunity to do it, so...
Understood. Entertained a motion? We have a motion and support. Further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Resolution 0518.16 to discuss Sheriff Rand. Any questions? Any comments? Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask the question. I know that the resolution's coming before us today in its final written form, but it said in MLive, it was discussed in MLive, that this was made aware, that this action was made aware to Sheriff Rand, that this action was made aware to Sheriff Rand ahead of time, and he knew that this was on the agenda for today, and is aware that this resolution is coming before us to be voted on.
Yes, that's correct. For a little history, for commissioners, this is the same tool we used for separation of the Full-Time Road Commission, and so, this is not a new tool. There's conversations that are ongoing with, in the past, with different people who the county would like to motivate to move on for separation. And when it comes to things like this, we meet, we discuss things, we make them aware. We are respectful of them and the work that they put forward to the county. And I believe that while Sheriff Rand very well should be forgiven for the action he's taken, at this time, I do not believe he can lead. And that's the issue that we're at, and this is utilizing all the tools the Board of Commissioners have. I've been in direct verbal contact with the governor's office and the attorney general's office. We are in complete alignment. They're doing their due diligence right now, and that is how you do investigations. You take that action after you've received it from a county, and you begin the investigation, and that's what's going on. So, the state's process is moving forward. The county is attempting to respectfully get a separation from Sheriff Rand and its current arrangements, and that's the other idea behind this resolution. Any questions? Entertained a motion, please. Mr. Mahoney?
Just wanted to say, so you said we are in complete alignment. That kind of answers the question that we had earlier about being in line with the MCL 168.207.
According to our attorneys, we are in the correct position to take all actions that we have taken.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion, please? We have a motion and support? Yep. The clerk's going to post the vote? The resolution passes eight-zero. We've arrived at commissioner comments. Any commissioner comments? Sarah, anything going on at the fair?
Well, May 14th, I think, it's the 14th, we're going to be making an announcement for another show. It'll be the final show, the fourth show. Other than that, tickets to our current shows are on sale right now. We have Darcy something, The Little Ventraliquess. Those tickets are on sale. There's not many tickets left for that show. We have a Back to Your Roots again with Pam Tillis, John Anderson, and Little Texas. And then, we have a Hard Rock Show, Theory of a Dead Man, and Pop Evil that's on sale. And then, we're also going to be having a special event in October. We haven't announced that yet, but that also is going to be coming very, very soon. We're super excited about it, just another special event on the grounds. Other than that, we're just moving forward.
Any other commissioner comments?
I have one more.
Yes, sir.
Also, that reminded me, we had Project Red last week. We had about 1,100 third graders last week at the fairgrounds. Jackson County Farm Bureau, FFA, Jackson Career Center, FFA, all chimed in and set up a bunch of stations, and it was a great day. We didn't have any injuries or any craziness. The weather was great, and it was just a great day.
Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, again, thank the administrator for making every attempt to reach out to Steve Rand and to see if ultimately, he would step up and do what was right for the county in total. But most important, that this resolution didn't come out of left field, that he had prior knowledge, because we did just vote this to take immediate effect. And the objective certainly is to apply some pressure to Steve to consider, you know, to put it in his hands and to consider his actions. I think that that's appropriate, but I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that for the whole month of April, this information was available to him, and certainly, leading up to the study session on our board docs, the actual resolution and the verbiage of the resolution was available to the public. So, this isn't coming out of left field. Thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, Commissioner Williams just put it very well. I certainly do appreciate the process that this is taken in terms of a very difficult situation, and the diligence that unfortunately has to be done. But, on a latter note, I'm going to throw out, as I've done before, since Sarah throughout the fair, this is not the fair, but the Lions Club Michigan Centers Carnival starts June 21st, goes to the June 24th, and it is a family event. Commissioner Elwell will remember, back in the day, it was an event that you could go to if you enjoyed fighting with people, literally fighting with people, fist and all. But now, it's a family event, cotton candy and all the fun stuff. So, again, that starts June 21st. Again, it's a pleasure being with this board.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Elwell?
Carl, you should clarify that I started my police career in Leoni Township back in 1980, and that's why I have the vast knowledge about the Carp Carnival.
Any further commissioner comments? Seeing none, we've arrived at, I believe... Any other items? Seeing nor hearing none? We arrived at public comment.
Peter Bornuth, I'm glad that your attorneys have you in compliance with MCL 168.207. I'd like to say that just for the benefit of the news media and the public, that it would be good if you read the resolution out loud before you passed it. I'm aware that it's on board docs, but people here might like to hear it, to know exactly what actions you were taking against Sheriff Rand. Thank you.
Any other public comment?